Welcome this evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We need to begin the meeting with the motion to approve the consent agenda. Please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Excellent. The consent agenda is items of routine and non-controversial matters that are on, that have already been discussed, and they're starred on the agenda. And there's details on them in the agenda and on our board docs. If anybody wants to know more details about the things that we just will be approving with this vote. Are there any comments or discussion on this? No. Missy?
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. All right. And I believe there are no blue cards this evening, so we will move past public participation. But the public is welcome to come and speak and share information with us at this time. Then we'll take this to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. Our guests already left who were here for the work session, but I just wanted to acknowledge those students who came from Eagle Valley High School. I think their comments were powerful, talking to us about the youth equity stewardship and what they're learning and how they'd like to see that grow and expand through their school. So I want to acknowledge their time and the work that they're doing. So let me get into my report. So it will be a lighter report. We were on midwinter break, so things were quiet here for a week, relatively quiet, but it doesn't mean that no work was getting done. I can't say that I wrapped up my piece of the G-series policy revision. Those are now in the hands of Adele Wilson. So Adele, as HR Director, is putting the finishing touches on those because those are all personnel policies. So once she gets her edits on those, we'll send those back to Casby, and we can start to move in to the next series. It should be H and I, and those will be into instruction and negotiation. So keep plowing through this policy revision process. It's really the most exciting part of my job. 3A renewal polling. We are working with Lori Weigel, who is the founding partner of Newbridge Strategy. We finalized our poll just this week. Thanks, Lou T. Varounis, for helping us in that process. And we should be starting to receive phone calls and text links going out next week. We're hoping for 300 poll results, and really, the intent of the poll is to determine if November 2020 is the appropriate time for us to ask to renew the 3A mill levy question. So we've asked for information on a couple of other pieces on there, like the appetite to support mental health through that mill levy, and whether or not community members feel like the district is adequately funded in general. And that will inform us as to what actions we might take post-2020. So thank you to Lou for her assistance on that, and also, our partners at EEC were instrumental in finalizing that poll. So I want to thank Charles Overe and Wendy Rabl, Tessa Kirchner, for also looking that over. Communicating with attorneys on a Juul lawsuit. So I just wanted the board to be aware that Eagle County has signed on as a party in class-action lawsuit against Juul, one of the primary manufacturers of vaping devices. I contacted the attorneys that are in charge of that lawsuit. It's Keller Rohrbach out of Seattle, and talked to them about what it might mean for the school district to join in that as well. We had a phone conversation about it, and then I also spoke with our attorneys about joining that lawsuit to see if it was worthwhile for us. It's likely that there will be many, many organizations that sign on to this lawsuit. The way that the suit is structured, it's a contingency fee scale from the attorneys. In other words, we don't pay anything unless we win something, but the amount of the award has an impact on the percentage that gets paid out to the attorney. So at the low end, it's about 22% if the payout is in like the $10 million range, but as that escalates, it could, as the payout escalates, the percentage that you pay to the attorney can climb up to 63%. So in talking to them about the work that it might entail on our end, I think it's a stretch for us to get engaged in this because none of the data that we've collected about vaping specifically lists Juul. So we can certainly speak to the impact and the growth that this has had for us in terms of management, discipline, resources that we've put towards cessation efforts. We've got two positions we've recently hired to help us address this with our prevention specialists. But I think this is a classic question of whether the juice is worth the squeeze. In other words, what we would put into this is going to result in anything meaningful for us at the end of the day, and I'm not confident that it will. So I have no intention of continuing to pursue this, but I feel like we did due diligence in looking at the retainer from Keller Rohrbach, that we shared it with our attorneys to get their opinion. And I just, I think it would be, it would be time-consuming for us, and I'm not confident it would result in much of a payout. There's also a risk, too, that if the case were to end, or at some point, we were to back out because it's going to be based on Washington law, not Colorado law, that the hours billed by Keller Rohrbach along the way, if we were to end the process early, we would still be on the hook to pay them, which could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I'm not of the mind that I would advise us to engage in that work. But I wanted you to be aware that I've been investigating that to see if it was worthwhile. Additionally, I participated in an MTSS planning meeting, and I wanted to acknowledge Melissa and Robin's work. I really feel like we're starting to get organized on our personnel development plan, how we're going to start to combine equity and MTSS work, how we're translating that into a really comprehensive and thoughtful plan for next school year. So that meeting that I was in just a few days ago, I thought, was, it really started to feel like that's coming together. So thank you, Melissa, for that work. This week, I got to meet with Will Cook. We've emailed and spoken on the phone, but this is the first time I've ever gotten to sit down with him and learn about the priorities of Vail Health and how they can continue to support us. You may be aware that they fund quite a few programs for us. They fund our project Lead the Way in many of our schools. It's a STEM program. They also helped us outfit the H2 Health Science Building with all the equipment, $50,000 worth of equipment in gypsum. And those are just two of the biggest ones. They've got other programs as well. But I think the point that Will made to me is, we need to keep this partnership alive and well. We need to be communicating often and figure out ways that their resources can help our organization. It was also informational for me because he is working closely, is working closely with Chris Roemer at Vail Valley Partners on trying to lower health costs in our community. And that could have a positive impact for our organization if they could get some traction on that. So that was a good meeting. I appreciate Will's invitation. Finalized recommendations from the DAC committee. Amy Vanwell, Principal at Berry Creek Middle School, ran our DAC committee this year, and we just wrapped that up last night in this room. So at our next meeting, I think March 11th, you should see the recommendations from the DAC committee. So I want to thank Amy Vanwell for running that committee. She did a very efficient job, and you'll have, you'll have their recommendations at our next meeting. Coronavirus update. I don't have it. So there's your update. We are actually reaching out to public health, Eagle County Public Health, and the Colorado Department of Education are advising that we start communications about our pandemic plan. That doesn't sound like a very encouraging name, but that's what they call it. So we're meeting next week on Monday. Representatives from Eagle County Health are coming to our leadership team meeting. So we'll have our communications people, our ops people, all of our school managers are going to be there, and we can understand better what the community-wide plan is and how we play a role in that. We did get assurances from the Colorado Department of Education that in the event that the coronavirus makes its way to Colorado, that the Department of Ed will exercise a lot of flexibility with schools in the event that we have to close for any prolonged duration to ensure that it doesn't spread more in our community. So they would be flexible with us in terms of accountability standards, in terms of contact minutes, in terms of support to develop some online learning opportunities. So it seems like everybody's starting to mobilize around this concern, and just wanted you to understand that we are in that process as well, coordinating with state and local authorities to develop our plan. And that's all I got. Back to you, Madam President. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Michelle, shall we start with you? This is Board Reports.
Thank you. Enjoyed the midwinter break for our first year as a family, having a person in the school district. So thanks for that week to spend together as a family. And then since then, I got to be a guest speaker on Monday night at FLTI, the Family Leadership Training Institute, who is, is supported by Early Childhood Partners and CSU Extension, just doing great work in the community, helping to build leadership and advocacy. It's a 20-week program where community members volunteer to learn about themselves and learn about how to get involved in the community. And my topic I spoke on was systems in the community, and how systems interact, and roles that I have through the school district and Mountain Youth, how they're making an impact in the community, and how some of these family leaders could get involved with, with systems. So that was really great. They have about 15 family leaders right now, and they all have a community project coming together that I got to hear about, based on their passions. And then this morning, I got to attend Eagle County Charter Academy's Outreach Committee, and it's a committee that's focused a lot on community outreach, but also diversifying their lottery. And so I've really enjoyed being a part of that group to help look at strategies that we can do a better job, talking about the school and the community. Thanks.
I, too, enjoyed the midwinter break. I had family in town, and I have to say, I have absolutely nothing to report. I have done very little in the last two weeks. So that was my report. Nothing.
I went to the ECCA board meeting. It was the day after ours, so the 13th. And it was, it was a good time. We had a lot of, interestingly, the committee who reported to their school board was the Outreach Committee. So I learned a lot about the details of how they run it, and heard from some of the community members about how there have been some very successful outreach efforts. And I stayed for the whole meeting. Might be interesting for you to know, oh, you came from the board meeting at the school district. How long was your meeting? I said, it was only five hours, because that was kind of the short one we did last on the 12th. And they just stared at me. They thought I was joking. And I said, no, it's, it was short. It was only five hours. It's usually six. And they just, they were kind of shaking their head, that they couldn't believe that we had board meetings that long. But I really enjoyed it. Also, was in a meeting, dual enrollment meeting. I work at CMC, so we're having lots of, Katie was there, talked about the new change in the math, the math formula for the high schools, and how we hope to coordinate more closely with them. And that's it for me. Thanks.
I also enjoyed the break with my kids after they recovered from the flu, and I have nothing to report.
One was Head Start Policy Council. We have Shelley here, who gave us some update later. And then also, I was at DAC that Phil mentioned, which was sort of the wrap-up of all of the sessions that we had had earlier prior to them coming and reporting to us next month. That's it.
Good. I don't feel quite so bad now, because I've been gone a really long time. And all I have to report is, I did do my due diligence with agenda planning, and we try to make sure that everything that we do put on these agendas in these meetings that last five, six hours is valuable work that moves the work of the district forward and improves learning for students. But I, birthday parties, I get to travel far to '94, and a 70th birthday party, and then hosted an 11-year-old birthday party, which is just a little reminder to me, and a lot of reflections on age, and friendship, and love, and family, and the importance of all that kind of stuff, but not too much board work. It was nice to close up my computer and let it sit there for a while. But I'm very happy to be back, and it's really great to see all of you again. We'll move on to old and new business. And Michelle's mention of the Family Leadership Training Institute reminds me that we, there was a request for a board member on April 6th, but our members that are going to go, be it to the National School Board Conference, are unable to fill that spot. Is there anybody who's going to be here? I'm reluctant to come in on that day myself because of another birthday.
I know Fernando's not here to volunteer. I hear he's lined up for a later night to speak to FLTI, and just talking to Glenda, who's coordinating this week, she said she'd be happy to do a little bit of rearranging if he would be available that night, and she could find someone else to speak on the other topic, if we didn't have somebody else able to join.
Missy, what do you know about this?
Fernando's attending the NASB conference as well, so he won't be able to, the flight doesn't get back in time to get him to that.
All right. So we'll have to check in with Glenda and see what we can do to help her out.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. And here on my list for next week, DAC is not on there for March 11th, just here in board docs, but we can add that there.
It should be down at the bottom under monitoring reports.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Sorry, at the very end.
That's okay.
So monitoring reports, DAC, EL14 Educational Program, GP3 Board Job Description. Some of these monitoring reports are what gets put on consent, the Board Job Description. We look at it, we read it, we know what it is. We've been doing the work for a while. We don't need to take this much time to talk about. More strategic plan update, a budget work session. This is our critical time of the year to move forward and make sure that we're ready to approve next year's budget, when the time comes in June. And the housing draft report presentation, which will be interesting, because that's some work we've been working on for quite some time. Green Schools Program, will maybe get this rooftop cell tower contract finished?
Not yet.
Not yet? Maybe in a couple of weeks. And the student fee schedules? Or anything else that anybody has burning on their agenda, something that we need to talk about, that needs to get put on this list? This is the time to mention that.
Are we going to get an update on the MOU with ECCA?
Yes, we have a meeting tomorrow, actually, to bring those two teams together again. So hopefully, in that meeting, we can finalize some other changes to that. So yeah, we can add that. Missy, we can add that in as an agenda item for the 11th.
Right. So I think we've made some real good progress behind the scenes, and we'll see how that goes tomorrow. All right, Shelley, Smith, Shelley Smith, not Shelley Jarno. Wait a second. Shelley Smith is here. And, yeah, 1:00. This is a review year, so we're going to go into a little bit more depth. The work that this team puts into making sure that our youngest and most vulnerable kids are safe and learning and having an excellent educational opportunity is just really remarkable.
As is the bureaucracy involved.
As is, yeah.
Just a reminder of the topics in why we're presenting them tonight.
That one? Okay, yeah, I'm really loud. Is just, the intention is that you're making decisions and giving us feedback based on information. So tonight, you'll see the community assessment first, and that's just for information. Then we'll do the self-assessment, which is of our, just our program, and that one does get reviewed and approved. That has to be approved by the board every year. And then we'll get, using kind of information we've given you previously, and those information, any input you all have to our goals for our grant, because those need to be, next month I'll come back, our grant is due at the end of March, and you have to review and approve it. And there was a change in 2016 where you actually are, need to be involved in inputting development of the goals. So that's the focus of tonight's meeting. So really, the community assessment, we tried to pull out because it is a pretty comprehensive document that we have to include many different items for the Office of Head Start. So tried to really pull out the items we feel will affect, could affect our program. So those are included, is one is, which many of us, you know, from the overall district, is declining birth rates could have a potential impact on our enrollment. And then so also declining poverty rate. So a bulk of our children, we like to say, are under-resourced, so they're living below poverty, and that's our Head Start and our Colorado Preschool Program. Those are the sources they serve. So those two things are declining, but when you look at the numbers in the report, we still have quite a few unserved children that meet both those requirements. So I do not think we are going to have vacancies or vacant spots, but it is reducing. So we went from, I think, about three years ago to having about total 78 up-valley, 48 down-valley that we're unable to serve, to now a total of 44. So it's getting, it's getting better, but there still is a need. The one thing that causes need to go up is increased housing costs, which you all are aware of in the community. And one of the qualifiers to be eligible for Head Start is be homeless, according to the McKinney-Vento. And so that's most of our, many of our families that are homeless are sharing housing. And there was a pretty long portion with numbers and how that happens, and what the requirements were in the self-assessment. So why, the birth rate's declining and the poverty rate's declining, the homeless is increasing because of the cost of housing. So we don't think that we're going to have still a significant need, because those factors kind of offset each other. And then, again, the concentration of children living in poverty is the gypsum-dotso-Eagle and Edwards area, which is, right now, the focus next year is to add two more classrooms in the Edwards area. And again, that is where the concentration of unserved applications were this year. Any questions on those before I go to service impact, because that's all about the enrollment piece? Okay. The next one is the number of children receiving special education has increased. And I was sharing with Amy earlier, one of the documents on there that you'll see is since October count, so we grew 23 children, where last year, we grew from like six. So this year, there was a huge spike after October, and we have, we are required to serve children on or before their third birthday if they qualify. So this year, there was a huge increase that we've had enrolled from now until October. Most of those children will be coming back next year, because when they qualify as three, they come back next year, which again, makes me pretty confident that we're going to be fully enrolled. And then uninsured families has increased, and that is causing, we identify children that have needs, mental health, physical, and some of those families are not going back to get the service we've identified because they're uninsured or their child is uninsured, because they may be choosing not to access those resources because of fear. Or their child is foreign-born, so there may be some acts, they're not eligible for some of the services. We do have an increase in foreign-born children that we're serving. And again, the unemployment rate seems to be stable, but that, we feel, is also attributing to some of the follow-ups. We're working closer with our families, and again, I think we had a pretty long conversation about this at Policy Council. Some of our families, because they're working two and three jobs, can't take their child to that dental appointment in Glenwood, because that's the only provider that might do restorative dentistry on their three-year-old. So we're finding more and more that it's a pretty big challenge, and we, we offer to pay for transportation, we have to reimburse for things, but they just are having a hard time taking time off to make some of those, to get some of those services to their children. So this, again, is just an information item. There is a link on that. I do want to let you know that link is not a finalized report, but we wanted you, again, for tonight's input to the grant, to have access to, I would say, 95% of the data is ready to go. There are some, because we need to get them from community partners. It still needs updated, and those are in highlights. But it will be finalized and ready to be included with the grant package. But we wanted to make sure you had access to the full report as in your draft form. So that's that link. So are there any questions about the community assessment? Just, and again, this is just information.
No, I just want to give a little shout-out to Beth Riley, though, for putting it together. It's very comprehensive, even if it's not quite complete, 50-page report, when detailing all the stats and the growth and the data charts, and it's nice work. It's very, very good.
Yeah. Beth does a phenomenal job, and, and also leads the Health Services Advisory Committee, which collaborates on the community, and also is part of the FLTI group. So she's a great resource, for sure, and does a lot of work. So thank you for bringing that. Okay, so we will move to the next item, which is an action item, and that's the annual self-assessment. I'm not going to, I'm really just going to answer questions, but I wanted to go over the format, somewhat just to explain to you that we have to present it in that method. We're required to have those components in there. You do have a copy of the self-assessment in there. We're required first to have the purpose, you know, what our intent is, the method that was used, and then we are required to add the areas of strength. So we weren't trying to just pat ourselves on the back. And then areas of concern, and then any areas of focus. So the areas of concern are something we would say needs to be addressed within the next 90 days, and then the areas of focus. So you have the full report. I thought it would be best just to answer any questions you have before presenting it for approval.
Any questions on this? It's very thorough and clear, cut, and well-explained, even though it's the first time some of us have seen it, and the 10th time others of us have seen it.
It's a challenge to keep Head Start stuff simple, but we try.
But I do know the process that they go through is very elaborate and thorough, checking all the rooms and the classrooms and the different requirements, and the playgrounds is one of our hardest areas to keep up, just with the weather and the use that it gets with the kids. Things break and get used, and so that's always a challenge, right? Keeping the playgrounds and this during the winter, making sure that the snow is friendly and not dangerous.
Yeah, and I do really want to thank the operations team. We, a few years, and it was Policy Council added money to have snow removal, because if we get two feet of snow in a playground, and you're, you know, 36 inches tall, it's a challenge. So we have a dedicated person that kind of, were their first priority. And again, what we contribute doesn't pay. I don't know how much of a salary, Sandy, but, but I was at a site on a Monday morning after a big snowstorm, and, and he was out there with his snow plow, and by the time it was time for them to go outside, the children, even the infant, even the toddler room could actually access the playground. So super appreciative. And that's been a pretty significant change in the last three years that we've worked and worked to get that done. So it's been great to see, because it's been a big snow year.
So and the ongoing monitoring progress is put in here, where the data and the assessment and the program and the monitoring, and it keeps going around in the circle, in this constant circle, not just once a year when they give us this report, but constantly looking at what can be improved and how they can make the program better.
Yeah.
I move to approve the 2019-2020 Early Childhood Self-Assessment as presented.
Hold a second.
Further comments or questions? Missy?
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
So the next item is input item, and just, again, we can do this in any format, but I know last year was like, so what do you want, you know, what do you want from us as far as input? So I did put some recommendations in there. So they were revised. The expectations went from just review and approving to providing input. They don't really state what that input needs to be, so that's why we're just having that, presenting this data, having you look at our current goals, which is the first part of the self-assessment, and then to give feedback. So my recommendation would be to review those, and if there's any objective that you felt is a concern in the self-assessment, but maybe you don't see captured in one of our goals, that might be something you would see missing. If you see one of the goals, you think, by the data you've seen, that we've addressed it, you may want to say it may need to be revised or changed. Couple recommendations that actually came from Policy Council, just to give you some things that are already going to be added or tweaked or changed, is there was, they want, at the objective level, not the whole goal, but they wanted an objective added under the, the health, is to address or evaluate some nutritional concerns, and Shelley can maybe speak to that. We did say, we had that as an item a couple years ago, to evaluate if we were meeting the USDA requirements, and we did that, and we were, and the parents said, yes, but... And the parents said, yes, but I still have a concern as a parent with pizza frequently. So even though it wasn't our self-assessment, we did assess we were meeting the USDA guidelines, so we took it off because that was what it was. The Policy Council feel, still felt it needed to be looked at. And so that was their recommendation. And the other recommendation would be to add an objective, not a whole new goal, but an objective. The parents talked quite at length about, many of the families aren't aware of the resources, or until they came to our program, were not aware of all the resources that they had, and want us to find and support getting more out there. And I think many of you that work in the community know that that's, our resources are very underutilized. And what could we do, even as part of all the applications we get, what could we maybe do more to make sure that all those families know about the resources? So those were both recommendations from Policy Council, and they will just be kind of an objective under one of the goals. They fit pretty well under, under Family Services, and the other one fit well under Health Safety Nutrition for fam, for children. So those were the recommendations thus far. But then I would like to see if you all have any recommendations that you want to have added, changed, or deleted, based on the data that you've been given.
I'll just say that as someone who has participated in the Policy Council, I'm pretty impressed with the group that participates. You know, they all have kids in the program, and so they kind of know firsthand what goes on, and they're pretty committed to showing up to the meetings and really bringing up their concerns. Another thing that I have sort of learned through this process of being on the committee is just how many things Shelley's department is involved in. So in addition to education, there is this whole health and nutrition and all sorts of other aspects of early childhood that schools are helping to provide, and whether it's directing them to the correct resource or actually providing them on-site. It's actually pretty remarkable how many things we do to help these little ones get off to a good start, so.
And, and there's so many data out there, like those really successful early childhood programs, the Harlem Zone Project, the Chicago Project, all of them had comprehensive services. So I think really to have an impact on at-risk or under-resourced early childhood, they need those comprehensive services. So I think for us, they're almost as important.
Well, and when you use the term comprehensive with your work, I think the mind goes to serving the whole child. And I've really appreciated getting to work a bit with your department and the family's interest and eagerness to get services for all family members, to help support their kids that are in our programs, but knowing that the health of the family is so important as well.
Yeah, and I'm not going to go into too much detail, but to plant a seed is, there may be a potential, Head Start is, they've let us know it's coming, they haven't given us details, a pretty significant amount of money to add for mental health, and that is one of the resources we provide to the whole family, is we have, we meet with the family and the child, and we may have an opportunity to get more resources to support that work because the amount of our grant we've dedicated to that has grown and grown. So in the near future, we may come into you and say, do you want us to apply for more of those resources to do just that? But again, we're going to wait till we know all the strings attached. Then if there is no input, again, we'll have about three weeks. It'll be on the agenda item for you all at the end of March. We'll present it, get Policy Council next week to review, approve the initial draft. But if somebody has something, you have an aha, you have a conversation with someone between now and then, feel free to email me. It doesn't have to be input at this meeting today, somewhere between now and March, you know, before I send to the next board packet. Or you can, we could add it during that, during that process, too, if needed. Okay? And I think that's it for me for tonight.
Thank you, Shelley. And also appreciate your efficiency. We have a new time ticker going on back there, and you.
How am I doing? Good.
Very efficient. Thanks.
I'm checked. You're welcome. I don't want to contribute to the sixth hour.
We certainly won't blame you for that. Thank you very much for your presentation. And I don't think that the lack of our input is due to lack of interest, it's just due to the, the comprehensive thoroughness, yeah, of the report. There isn't much that we can add to, to the work that you do. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I just need, I don't want to mess anything up.
And we're going to move on to an information item on the curriculum review and adoption Pretty well merging everyone's individual computers with the, the system that exists here in the room. All right.
Okay. Renee Westenfelder, our curriculum coordinator, had hoped to be here tonight to present as well. However, her husband is recovering from some pretty intensive hip surgery, and I said, why don't you just stay home and take care of that? So it's just the Katie Jarno Show. So looking at our curriculum policies and adoption process, this deals with policies IGA, IGD, and IGF, which regulate the work of developing, adopting, and reviewing the curriculum process in that order. So the problems that we're looking at is how to develop a district-wide curriculum that's aligned with state standards, following research and adoption processes for all of our curricular resources. I have that all capitalized because that's something that we're working on. We've had a lot of schools that have kind of gone rogue, not through any fault of their own, that's not anything against them, but we've had a lot of different resources brought in, and we need to get a handle on that for several reasons, to make sure that we have the best resources in the best places, that we're following a district curriculum, not theory, what's the word I'm looking for, sorry, following what we want our curriculum to be. For instance, we're, have made some strides in math and in really trying to address math mindsets, in really trying to modernize our math programs. Math is very different now from when I was in school, and yet we have one school that's using a product that is the antithesis of what we really want our schools to be using. Not their fault, they were looking for something and they reached out, and that has been kind of the procedure in our district for a while. And so we're trying to kind of wrangle that back in and make sure that all of our research adoption is following this process that I'll outline for you. And then to periodically review curriculum and resources as things change, we want to make sure that we're staying up with the most effective resources. And then ensuring that the procedures adhere to the policies, so that we are actually enacting the policies the way that they're supposed to be enacted. So the systematic development, review, and adoption is vital to maintaining an updated and effective curriculum that provides for student success. And as I just outlined, it's important that that adoption process be followed. So understanding curriculum, there's a lot of confusion sometimes around what curriculum is and what resources are. So curriculum is really what we teach. The frameworks are documents that teachers use that are aligned to the standards, that unpack what those standards are and help teachers to understand what the standards are that they're teaching. And that those documents are really used in planning out what teachers are teaching, in the vertical alignment of what we're teaching. And then we have resources. And the picture here is actually a stock picture that comes with the presentation template, and I decided to keep it because I think that, that sort of tractor really kind of is what resources are. Resources are the vehicle that we use to present the curriculum. And sometimes it is a little messy, like that picture looks, and sometimes we need to help kids to follow that path. You know, the path that that vehicle is making is pretty bumpy, so sometimes we need to help kids with that as well. So the curriculum is the what, the resources are the vehicle for how we present that what to kids. And then the process is that we have standards alignment. The State Department of Education lays out the standards that we need to follow, and we make sure that our curricular frameworks are, are aligned with that. And then, once we know that our frameworks are aligned, we look for resources that support those frameworks. And then along with that comes professional learning. We need to make sure that we are continuing to update our teachers, and then because of the rate of turnover, we also have to be very mindful about how we onboard new teachers and making sure that they are, have learned about all of the curricular resources as well. So when we're talking about the policy, I would have you look at the redlined policy that I, I provided for you. For policy, IGA, curriculum development, there were several changes that we wanted to make, which are not huge changes, but just align it more with what our, our procedures really are and ensure that we're being followed. So on page two, under Regulations Number Two, we added an assurance that the adoption process for resources is being followed. We need to provide for some exceptions to keep from disrupting resources that are currently in place. So we don't want to pull the rug out on anyone and say, no, you didn't follow the process, you can't be using that anymore. But as I mentioned before, we kind of want to wrangle this in and make sure that all the resources we have in place are in line with our philosophies, are in line with our frameworks, and are moving kids ahead in the way that is best. Throughout the document, we replaced Curriculum Director with Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction or Designee. We don't have a Curriculum Director right now, and that changes. But it's, it's more likely that we would always have an Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and they could have a Designee who would do all of those On page two, under Regulation Five, we're looking at just opening that up instead of providing that the meetings take place two to three times a year. In some cases, two to three times a year could be excessive. It might be an off-year for a particular curriculum team, and we would only have to meet once. In other times, that might not be anywhere near enough. And then on page three, under the Curriculum Team Design Responsibilities, we've struck the five-year plan. We're actually on a three-year plan. We've talked about expanding that to maybe a four-year plan. We wouldn't want to go any further than a five-year plan, but we want to have that flexibility. Our plan is not a five-year plan right now, it's a three-year plan. And then on page four, striking the word inservicing, that is a really outdated term that we don't use anymore. So we're replacing that with professional learning, which is updated language. Yes, sir?
On page three, after the middle. On page three in the middle, I don't know what the ad team is.
Oh, that's the administrative team. So that is all of the principals, Learning Services, Operations.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Policy, IGD, and IGF, we didn't really see any changes necessary in those policies. Any other questions on that? And then the vision or our timeline, right now, this is an English and math year, so we are moving our math, high school math, to a traditional scope and sequence, and looking at our ELA resources for elementary, also looking at intervention supports. Next year will be a Science and Social Studies year, and you'll see in the next presentation, which Renee would have presented, that she actually started on the science standards and some of the science work this year with middle school. Because of the way that the state is going to roll out the science, math, CMAS test, we need to get a jumpstart on those standards because this year's sixth graders will be tested in eighth grade. So we needed to start interjecting those standards this year with our sixth graders. So she did some amazing work that went really above and beyond what she should have been doing this year. And we kind of had to make some hard choices about some things, again, that I'll, I'll address in the next presentation, that we had to put some things off that we'll be doing over the summer in order to get that science work into this year's work. The following year's technical subjects, that's what it's called, it's basically everything else. So anything outside of science, social studies, English, or math. So all of our specials are social-emotional learning. All of those things are in the 21-22 school year, and then we repeat the process over again. The good news is, based on the Herculean work that we're doing with high school math this year, by the next math cycle, we should have everything in place. We're going to have, our elementary resources are already in place, our middle school resources are in place, and we will have our high school resources in place, and it will really truly just be a review year where any changes to the standards, we'll be making sure, are integrated into our curricular frameworks. And that's all about policy.
I have just one question.
Yes, sir.
I know at some point in the past, we were talking about kind of trying to standardize the grading scale. Is that tied in with this as well?
It is not. The grading work is separate from the curriculum work, but that is work that is ongoing that Melissa has actually been heading up.
Okay, thank you.
I just got a question about, when we had looked at that long list of sort of package A, B, and C of resources, one of the items we discussed was some kind of, I don't know if it was a software, what it was exactly, to inventory everything that we actually do have.
Yes.
Are we continuing to look at that? And do we have our arms around what we do have in our district right now? Or is that a project? Or where are we with that?
So we are not able to move ahead with looking into purchasing a system of that sort because of the resource needs that we have. When we presented those packages, we were hoping that we would be funding that with some of the unspent monies from last year. Through the negotiations process, we only got $50,000 for that. So that automatically took that software off the table. However, having said that, we have discussed how we can do things in-house to, we had a system when most things were hard copy in textbooks. We've gotten away from that. So anything that would be hard copy, we would go back to barcoding and entering into our library systems, which is kind of the best we can do with what we've got right now. Most of what we're moving into is online, and so working with our EdTech department and our technology department, we're also getting a better handle on how to keep up with the licensing, the renewals. So yes, we're making some improvements in those areas, but we just don't have the money to do what we had hoped. Any other questions? I believe there's an action to this, or no? No? Okay. Okey-dokey. Then we will switch to... Come back. I'm sorry, is Footsteps to Brilliance next, or is it?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I pulled up the wrong one. I'm just going to unplug this for one second. Sorry, I'm having a hard time pulling this up. I'll be quick, I promise. No, it'll make me, it'll make me be faster. Don't pause that. It'll be fine. Okay, I'm having a hard time pulling this up, and so I'm just going to, it'll look a little bit funny. Yeah, I don't know how to.
Go up here.
Okay, put it on that one, then.
If it's on the what is I?
Yeah, so it's that one right there. I just didn't know how to get it out of that format where it.
There's not really any way.
Okay, then I'm good. Then it'll be the same thing I've got. I've got it, I just don't, it's just not in the pretty format I wanted, but that's So we So, we talked about this earlier in the school year, that we had gotten feedback from principals that they didn't feel that Footsteps to Brilliance was being utilized in the way that it was intended. It's a fairly expensive program, and so, they were wondering if we could look into something different. So, the problems we have to solve is looking at the Footsteps to Brilliant usage, gathering feedback from principals and teachers on usage and the fidelity, how it's being used, and then examining it in relation to other curricular priorities, and to explore ending the Footsteps to Brilliance contract. So, the first thing we looked at was the usage. It really hasn't gained traction in the way that we had hoped. We had hoped that this would be something that families would access from home, that could address that anyone in the community from birth onward could access this, that if we had households that weren't print-rich households, that have lots of books and lots of literature and lots of reading materials, that this would be a way to access that. And despite, I think, our best efforts, I think we had really good efforts with this in terms of the rollout was really huge, and the continued campaign and communication was great, but it just hasn't gotten the traction that we had hoped. So, the impact of the program doesn't necessarily justify the cost. When we look at this school year, the Birth to PK, there was only one user, and they were on for 50 seconds. So, they logged on, they looked around, they logged off. Maybe it was a mistake. Maybe they didn't even mean to be there. I don't know. It was 50 seconds. Our PK to Three, there were 81 users total. 27 of those had only signed on. 32 of them were less than 60 minutes. 29 were two hours to 12 hours. So, they were on, they were reading some books. That's good. But, there were only two hour, two users that utilized it for at least an hour per week, which is the time that's necessary in order to show growth. So, that was the community usage. When we look at the school usage in grades K through Three, Edwards Elementary and Avon Elementary used it the most, but they also were using it in their after-school programs. So, that wasn't just in-class usage. That was also being used in after-school program. And you can see there, all the way to Red Sandstone had only utilized it for three hours a week. Another piece of the rollout and of the services that Footsteps to Brilliance provides is professional development. And so, teachers have been trained in how to use it, how to utilize it in the classroom, how to use it in a small group setting, and it's just, again, it's not gained tractions there. I went ahead and looked at Edwards Elementary. I'll put both of these up here. I looked at Edwards Elementary usage in order to, because they used it the most of any school. So, they're kind of the best-case scenario. It's not easy to really drill down into the data. It's a very time-consuming process, so that's why we only looked at the one school that's using it the most. All of their K through Three teachers have used it to some degree. 151 students have signed on long enough to have read at least one book. So, I think we looked at like six or eight minutes for that. And only 12 students have signed on long enough to have potentially spent 30 minutes per week. Again, it doesn't show us week by week. We just, it shows us the total usage, and we have to extrapolate from there. But, there were 12 students, five in one class and seven in another, that had actually spent enough time on it to have met the guidelines that Footsteps to Brilliance gives in terms of what you would need to do in order to show growth. Then, when we look at a cost analysis for the 81 community users, and if we look at the 835 Eagle County School District accounts, again, not looking just at the kids who have actually used it, because to get that for all of our schools would be very time-intensive. It comes out to about $109, well, not about, it comes out to $109.17 for each of those users. So, essentially, for each license is about $109. And then, if we looked at, if we applied, so at Edwards Elementary, about 83% of their accounts were actually active. All kids have an account, but 83% of the kids were using that account for some period of time. And it could have been they just signed on, they could have used it for a few minutes, they could have used it, you know, for 30 minutes a week. But, for each of those kids, if we look at that 83%, it's $134.40 each, which is a pretty astronomical amount. We are looking, we have actually purchased for secondary, a similar product. It is not the same. It doesn't have all the bells and whistles. It does include professional development. It does include a library of books. It can be used 24/7, so on and so forth. It is not exactly the same. It is similar. It's a Renaissance product, and that product is $8 per license. So, I think you can see how, you know, despite our best efforts, the difference too is that with, with a lot of products, you pay per license. With Footsteps to Brilliance, it's an annual fee. And so, despite our best efforts of getting people onboard with it, it's a very, very expensive product for what it is. So, the next question was, you know, can we terminate the contract? And the answer is, yes, we can. Under the Colorado Law Addendum, which is part of the contract, we can terminate for basically any reason or no reason at all with 30 days' notice. We would want to, our next payment would be due in July, and so, we would be terminating the contract at the end of the school year. Again, we don't want to just pull the rug out from those teachers who are using it and the kids who are using it. We would want to make sure that we message that and that we follow our curriculum adoption process to come up with a replacement product. So, some possible alternatives, and again, we just briefly looked at what other things might be out there. This is not by any means a comprehensive list, again, because we, we want to follow the adoption process in order to do this. So, there's a product called Epic, which is a K5 product. It's free to educators, 35,000 eBooks. It has videos and quizzes and games and things for kids to play with. Parents can opt into it for a nominal fee, but it is a monthly fee of like $5 for parents. Doesn't sound like much, but the idea behind the community piece of Footsteps to Brilliance was that we were really hoping it would support some of our families who are living in poverty, who might not have print-rich environments in the home. And so, to say there's a fee for the home usage is not my favorite thing to say. There's Khan Academy, which I think most people are familiar with, Khan Academy Kids, English, Spanish. It's got reading, writing, math, social studies, social-emotional development, all kinds of things with that. And then, the piece that we purchased for our secondary schools, which is a new Renaissance product, so it's, they're building it and working on it, but what they have right now, you have to purchase the student licenses. Those are about $8 a license. There's 6,400 eBooks. The nice thing about this is that it really matches to students' reading level. There are embedded supports. There's audio. It's in Spanish and English. So, those are some of the products that we've just very briefly looked at, but if the board supports terminating the contract with Footsteps to Brilliance, we would obviously want to follow the curricular adoption process and do a much deeper dive into what could we use as a replacement product. So, that's kind of our timeline, researching alternatives, getting ideas, getting the, we have an elementary English-language arts curricular team in place, already looking at our resources for our non-dual-language schools. We could just expand that a little bit and use that same team, hoping to have some sort of alternative by June, so that we would know if we were terminating the contact, contract with Footsteps to Brilliance, what we would be replacing it with. Then, ending the contract, and then, in August, we would be offering professional development on whatever new product we decided to go with.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The $8 per person one, you've already, you've already gone, you've already got that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any...
For secondary, not for elementary.
For secondary, okay. And if you were to end the contract early, is there any kind of prorated refund if you don't do?
We just wouldn't be paying for next year. We've already paid for this year.
Okay, you can't, I'm going to say, if you killed it now, there'd be like four months of prorated that you didn't use, but that's not part of it. You couldn't get that back.
Right. No, if we wanted to end it now, we could potentially get that four months back. We don't want to end it now, because there are people using it, and we want to have a replacement before we do that. So, it would, it would simply be, and I say, I say we might get that money back. I don't, I don't know that for sure, but we don't want to end it until the end of the school. It would be just not continuing the contract going forward.
Okay, I understand.
I'm so glad that it's a priority for the district to have a resource like this, especially for families, like you said, who may not have a print-rich environment at home. Do we have any indicators on the folks that have been using this at home, what the demographics are?
No, we don't.
And I guess, as a follow-up to that, do we have information either through the district or community, or maybe anecdotal information on families living in poverty, if they still have reliable Internet access? Or do all of these curricular resources have a really user-friendly interface with like mobile devices and tablets if they don't have, you know, a traditional computer at home?
Yes, they all have, they can all interface with mobile devices, Footsteps to Brilliance and the others that we've looked at. Anecdotally, and we don't have any real research on this, but anecdotally, what we've found is that especially for our younger kids, they would be using mom or dad's cellphone at home. And a lot of those plans that our families living in poverty are on have limited minutes. They have limited time on their phone, and so, they, they can't really necessarily hand it to the kiddo or read along with the kiddo or whatever. And that's anecdotal. We don't have research on that, but it stands to reason, I think. So, we would still continue to look for something that interacts with mobile devices, but I'm not sure that that's a reliable way to assume some of our, our families in poverty are accessing the materials.
If I could add one thing, we are in the process of developing a home Internet survey. We just got it this week translated into Spanish, and that'll be going out to all of our families. And that'll be an annual survey that we do to find out what is available in their homes. So, we'll have more hard data on that information.
Well, and another follow-up thought to that, I don't know if we've ever explored like open computer lab time, where families can come in and use school devices with their kids, or partnership opportunities with the libraries in the community for them to help market whatever resources we end up with.
There was some, some partnership, and it was before my time, so I'm not totally familiar with it, because I was more connected to the secondary world before I was in this position. But, there was partnership with libraries on Footsteps to Brilliance and marketing through the libraries to folks that were coming there. But, I think that those are all great ideas, and I think we could definitely do better. I think that the survey that Todd mentioned will help us to better understand the need and come up with ways in which to do that. I think also with the, I just thought of this out of the blue, but perhaps, as we're moving to one-to-one devices for our secondary kiddos, that's also a way, in the cases where those kids are taking the devices home, that perhaps a younger sibling could have access There's still a question about all of that. Not going to put you on the spot.
I think it could also have to do with, I don't know, I know in Eagle Valley Elementary, they're really good about sending books with the kids every week for them to read, depending on their level. And I'm the mom that doesn't let them read books on the laptop. I'd rather them just read, you know, the book itself. So, that could be one thing. And then, like you said, accessibility to having a laptop or an iPad, like not every kid, not every family has that. So, maybe we change what we're using, and it might still be the same. So, maybe we could also try and look into like the schools working on giving kids books for them to have every week, and then return them and switch them, and I don't know.
Yeah. No, I, I think that that's a really valid point that I, I didn't really bring up. That has been a concern as well with the research that has come out in the last few years in terms of children and screen time and limiting screen time for kiddos and brain development. That's something that we've also, we have talked about. When we did our initial research into what other products are out there, we just looked at things that were similar. But, I, I very much appreciate you bringing that up, and I think that that's a valid point as well, that maybe we want to look a little more traditionally.
Well, and to bring the library up again, I just learned last week that any kid with a student ID in our district can go and borrow books at the library. They don't have to go through the whole process with their proof of residency and whatnot. So, that's an amazing resource, and I never knew that existed. So, I don't know if there's ways we can market that with the school, with the library district.
It's really impressive seeing the kids coming in and, and you say, "Oh, what's your S-number?" And they're like, "Oh, no problem." And they type it right out. I mean, really, really young kids, and the parents are all, "What's an S-number?" And I'm like, "Well, none of us. Let's get some books." They can do whatever they want, the students, all the way through, one card, one, one library, the Vail Library and the whole Eagle Valley Library District.
Yeah, and we're really grateful for that partnership. That's been a really great thing for Eagle County Schools, to just streamline that and make it that easy.
Yeah, well, I appreciate us in the curriculum review process to look at things that we think are going to work and review them, and get to keep that, that constant feedback cycle working through in all aspects of our work that we do. And if we find something that isn't quite right, we have to admit that wasn't quite the right step and, and move on.
You're asking for action on this one?
And so, with that, I would move to approve terminating the Footsteps to Brilliance contract at the end of the 2019-20 school year with an adoption process for an alternative resource to begin immediately.
I'll second.
Are there further comments or questions?
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. Tivarcunis?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
It's, you never know how things are going to work out, really, and it may be that there's some more holdouts than we think, like me. I don't, I don't have a Kindle. I have a serious book problem, and you'd think that I'd be a Kindle person so that I wouldn't have to carry a bag of books with me everywhere I go. But, there's something about holding that paper and maybe saying, "Yeah, no, here, read this magazine" instead of going on the phone. And so, it would be a thing to, to delve into a little bit to see if we need another online resource. If, you know, in, in school, in the computer lab, that's one thing, but promoting it at home might not be the right, the right way.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that.
It was, it was a good effort. All right, where does that leave us?
Okay, I'm still up.
All righty, Youth Power.
So, we are in a year where we review our memorandum of understanding with Youth Power 365. And in that review process, we came up with a couple of different points that we thought we needed to clarify, and so, we engaged in the process of writing an addendum. And I am sad to say, I, I didn't feel good with how we, as far as we got. We didn't get as far as I had hoped. And so, the, the draft that I presented for you in the board packet has three items on it. The first is about the fall universal screening data, and what happened there was that there was a misunderstanding between Youth Power and Eagle County Schools in terms of how Youth Power requested the data. And so, they didn't get the data until, I think, well into November. And so, this just clarifies that, that Youth Power shall submit to Eagle County Schools a list of students by their local identification number no later than September 30th. And so, then, we will, they'll be able to get that data back in a more timely manner. So, really, that's just clarifying on their end that they needed to provide the specific identification numbers for the specific kids. identification numbers for the specific kids that they serve. They can't just make a blanket request for all kids' data. The second point is that we're removing, we used to have a location for the Electric Magic Bus preschool to be charged, and so it's just taking that out, that Youth Power has secured an alternative location for that, so they don't need our help with that anymore. So we're removing that from the MOU. And then the third point, which in the document that I provided you, I struck through and I'd like to remove, I have not gotten back from Youth Power a clean copy that has the third bullet point removed, but that's what I'm waiting on before we would sign anything with them. I would like to remove that bullet. They very much want to add their registration materials to our parent portal. We are piloting right now with one school, a single sign-on parent portal, so that instead of having to go sign on to Power School and to Class Dojo and to all these other things that, much like when kids sign on and they have all of their pieces on one screen, parents would have that as well. And Youth Power would like for us to put their registration process on there as well. There are a couple of issues with that. One is that if we do it for one community partner, we have to do it for all of them. And that's asking a lot of our Technology Department. Another question is just about security. Feel free to jump in here, Todd, because I'm talking about technology stuff that I know very little about. But there could be security concerns in terms of having a link to someone else's registration pieces in the same places as ours. So we just don't feel that we're at a place yet. We're happy to continue to consider it, but we're just not at a place yet where we could have language that says ECS shall add the Youth Power registration link on the community page on the parent portal. So what I'm asking is for the board to approve the addendum points one and two, but not number three. And then obviously, before anything was signed, we would have to have a copy that just has points one and two. And I have not gotten that back from them yet.
But is she okay with us approving this right here and with us wait to sign the clean copy?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate you sharing your thoughts as a representative of a community partner organization and one that works with a lot of them. I know we've heard frustrations for many, many years from families who have to go through multiple registration processes, sometimes even to register for different programs with the same organization. So it's definitely a need and a request for families in the community to have a more centralized process. However, I do think it, I totally hear you. It puts a lot on the school district to be that single point. And I agree with you, Katie, that if we did it for Youth Power, you know, we have a lot of other really close community partners that I think would hope or expect or feel neglected if they weren't included in a process like that.
And would deserve to have that same service.
I guess my one request would be, when we get to the point of actually signing that clean copy, if there was a way to provide to the board the full current document, the full current MOU, and even if it's through a Friday update or something like that.
Yes, I thought you had that, sorry.
That would be great. I'm sure we have it somewhere, but just to be able to get that refresher.
Sure.
Thanks.
Is there anything you want to add, Todd?
No. I mean, she stated it clear enough of what we're, you know, trying to work on right now. We'd just rather hold off on that. We really want to make the resources within the district our priority, and there's a lot of resources we've got to work through to get that ready. And I'd say eventually, yes, we want to look at how that, we can work that out and help our partners, but not at this point.
Right, and just get our 17 different log sign-ins all coordinated first before we bring anybody else into the picture.
See if this thing even works, right?
Yeah. And we're only piloting it at one school, so.
Correct. Correct. Yeah.
So I'll move to approve items one and two of the addendum to the memorandum of understanding, but not item three.
Second.
Further comments or discussion? Missy?
Okay. Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. Tivarkunis?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Thank you.
And thus ends the Katie Jarno Show.
Thank you very much for your work. That wasn't too bad. All right, so the other items have been on consent. And then evaluating the meeting in terms of governance policies. We did do some policy work. I like the red lines on the curriculum. We talked about policy earlier, working on different series. It seems a little dry, but it is important to remember that we are governance, a policy governance board, that we monitor the policies. So it's good to see we're making progress in that area. I think we advanced the goals and mission of the district. Some of these things, we got the Head Start bureaucracy moving forward, and then how did this meeting impact student learning? I think the students that came earlier showed us how some of our work is impacting them and if, how well-spoken they are is any indicator of how well we're educating them. Then we're doing a pretty good job, at least with a handful of kids that came with us tonight, and it's really nice. They were, they were open and they were honest, and we love hearing what our students have to say. So we thank them once again for showing up earlier this evening. Does anyone else have any comments?
Well, I'll just add too, getting to hear that Youth Equity Stewardship presentation by Marion Stavney and all the amazing students that came also reminds me of question number two, advancing the goals and mission of the district with our huge focus on launching the big equity, deep equity work this year. It was really great to get kind of a progress update on how it's going and speak really candidly with the students, the ones that are living this work.
Great. All right, well, we'll see you all next month. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.